Planning Commission will not come to order. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Funke.
Present.
Commissioner Gooding.
Present.
Commissioner Lau.
Present.
Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Sayasan.
Here.
Thank you. May I ask, please ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes with five ayes. Move to new business. Which is public hearing, a zoning text amendment 2025.
Through the chair?
Yes.
We have a couple other items before that.
Sorry.
Oral communications and written communications.
Oh, I apologize for that. I must have a... Apologize for that. For the consent calendar. Well, I mean, I'm sorry.
There's no consent calendar.
Okay.
Just oral communications.
Sorry, my annotated agenda. This is a missing portion of this. Any oral communications?
We'll just open it up for, what do you do, one minute?
Yep, we'll set a timer for 60 seconds. So folks can call in, or if they're in the Zoom, they can raise their hand for items not on the agenda.
15 seconds. All right, 60 seconds has elapsed, and no one has raised their hand. Thank you. Go on to written communications. Staff, are there any written communications? None, thank you. Now we can go on to new business. Which is regarding public hearing, zoning text amendment 2025-RZ-01. Citywide updates to density bonus and inclusionary housing ordinance to comply with its current state law and implement the city's 2023 through 2031 housing element, and finding that the proposed adoption of the zoning text amendment is exempt from CECA pursuant to CECA guidelines 15061B3, because it involves adoption of policies and programs that would not cause a significant effect on the environment. City of Brisbane is the applicant.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commission. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So the request before you tonight is to review a zoning text amendment to amend the city's inclusionary housing and density bonus ordinance. I'll be giving the staff report tonight, but I also want to acknowledge Tim Davis of Hart is here to provide some extra support during questions and discussion as needed. Great. So, leading up to tonight, the Commission held two public workshops in September and November of last year to study the current draft ordinance and evaluate proposed updates to that ordinance. So, the last time the Commission looked at this again was in 2019. The workshop staff reports from the fall address in detail the state regulatory context, as well as the summary of the Commission's prior study of the ordinance updates in 2018 and 2019. So we'll address that background briefly tonight, but of course additional details can be found in those staff reports, which were attached to tonight's agenda. So in brief, the state law authorizes cities to adopt ordinances that require a certain amount of affordable units to be included in new residential developments. These ordinances are known as inclusionary zoning ordinances. In terms of density bonus law, the state allows housing developers who provide a certain amount of affordable or special needs housing to achieve greater residential densities than would otherwise be allowed. It also allows those projects to diverge from other zoning requirements like height setbacks or parking. Cities can adopt implementing regulations for state density bonus law, but cannot limit what state density bonus law allows. So, state law is the floor. So in 2000...
Recording in progress.
Oh. Okay. In 2009, the city adopted an inclusionary housing and density bonus ordinance. That's in Chapter 1731 of the municipal code. The ordinance establishes inclusionary requirements for rental and for sale housing projects of six or more dwelling units or lots. And the ordinance establishes the city's procedures to implement the state density bonus program for projects of at least five or more units or lots. So in 2018 and 2019, the Commission studied various updates to the 2009 ordinance. Those updates were required by the 2015 housing element, as well as new state laws impacting inclusionary zoning and density bonus regulations. The Commission recommended approval, City Council approval of a draft ordinance in April of 2019. That draft ordinance is attached to the staff report tonight. The draft ordinance proposed splitting up the density bonus and inclusionary housing ordinances into two separate chapters to make them easier to implement. The ordinance also proposed significant changes to the inclusionary housing requirements. These changes include lowering the applicability threshold from six units or lots to five, increasing the affordability term for both for sale and rental units to perpetuity, applying a straight 15% inclusionary requirement for both for sale and rental projects, adjusting the affordability targeting for rental projects to very low income households, and allowing rental projects to opt to decide to pay an in-lu fee rather than constructing units on site. Changes to the density bonus ordinance were more targeted to kind of excise redundant provisions of state law or outdated provisions of state law, make it a little more update proof. But it also included a local density bonus for small projects of two to four units, which implemented a 2015 housing element program. So following Commission's action on the 2019 ordinance, Council's consideration of the ordinance was put on hold due to evolving state laws, the 2023 housing element, and preparation of the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan, which included an evaluation of the inclusionary housing ordinance. So after that five-year break, the Commission resumed study of the draft ordinance last fall, as you recall, where you considered some revisions to the draft 2019 ordinance and gave some direction to staff. Those revisions are presented in the attached resolution in addition to other revisions proposed by staff for your consideration tonight. So, we're going to go through now the proposed revisions to the draft ordinance. I'm going to take us through each section of the ordinance, and we can pause at each section if there's any questions. The only sections, I'm not going to go through their definitions, but we can definitely discuss those sections if you have questions. Okay, so, starting with the density bonus ordinance. So we're proposing revisions to clarify administrative procedures for density bonus requests. So those are located in Section 1729030. The revised draft ordinance proposes updating the section to basically establish the grounds under which an applicant can request a density bonus and the grounds under which a city can reject that request. We also propose revisions to clarify the decision-making body that's acting on the density bonus request to align with the permit that's applicable to the project. So for example, housing development permits are reviewed by the zoning administrator. These revisions are required to comply with the Housing Accountability Act, which prohibits discretionary review of projects that meet objective standards. Under the HAA, projects that request density bonuses, incentives and concessions, waivers of development standards, et cetera, can't be considered to not conform to whatever development standard they're requesting to be waived or modified. Finally, the section is revised to allow a developer to request one additional incentive or concession if they provide family-sized units, that's three bedrooms or more, to extremely low or low-income households. That is a program from our 2023 housing element that we'd be implementing. So I'll pause at this point for any questions on the changes to that section. Okay, I'll move forward. Okay. So, oops, sorry. Didn't mean to advance my slide. The changes to the next section are related to density bonus application processing procedures. So staff has revised this section to provide more clear applications of middle requirements. This is required by state density bonus law. We've also adjusted the affordable housing plan requirements to better comply with fair housing laws. This is specifically related to marketing plans. And we're proposing eliminating some provisions from the affordable housing plan related to methods for income verification and other qualifications for the target households. The reason for that is those standards should be citywide. They shouldn't be addressed in individual housing, affordable housing plans for projects. So kind of coupled with that, staff is proposing that the city establish implementing guidelines that would contain citywide... Oh. But guidelines that would have, you know, citywide requirements for income verification and other qualification processes. So I'll pause there again. Are there any questions on the changes to that section? Is your mic on? We're not hearing.
Multi-wire. Do you want to use mine?
Thank you. So are there any circumstances, assuming that this current revision of the ordinance is approved by the Commission and then approved by the City Council, will there be any remaining circumstances under which this Commission will have any discretionary review of inclusionary housing applications?
That question is going to be addressed later in the presentation.
Okay.
Can you hold it? Okay. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, hopefully we can help out your mic situation, too. Okay, the next section, the Affordable Housing Agreement section. So this section is proposed to be modified to extend the affordability term for target rental units from 55 years to in perpetuity. This would align it with the requirement in the inclusionary housing ordinance. It's consistent with what our current ordinance does, which has the same term for both density bonus target units and inclusionary units. Sorry for the technical difficulties. That's the primary change to that section. Are there any questions about that? Okay. And the next section.
I'm sorry, I may be a little naive, but perpetuity, it caught my eye a little bit. That seems like a long time. Like, there must be circumstances where it changes. Like, the covenant must, like, when it changes hands or something? I'm just wondering.
No, a provision for affordability that's in perpetuity would transfer to all successors and interest, whether it's for sale or rental. So, they would never expire.
And is that for the duration of the existence of that particular unit? What if it's like destroyed? Or, you know, you could imagine things happening, right?
Sure. I don't know if John has any immediate thoughts? If a development's destroyed, demolished, act of God?
As long as the project exists. If the project does not exist, it's been torn down and they've put the property some other use, then, then that would be... It would only run with the project that has been approved and entitled. So, if they tear down that project 40 years from now and they build something else, they'd be subject to whatever rules might be in effect at that time. Not, not, not this pre-existing approval, because that project is no longer in existence.
Okay.
Any other questions on the term? Okay. All right, moving on to the implementation and enforcement section. So, we had some minor amendments in this section to comply with our housing element program 3A5. That requires one-to-one replacement if any units are lost, so rented or sold in violation of the affordable housing requirements. Thanks. Staff also moved some provisions from the Affordable Housing Plan section into this section related to how modifications to an approved affordable housing plan would be processed. Finally, this section was also revised to refer to implementing guidelines in the general scope of topics or content that those guidelines would address. So that includes those, you know, provisions for successors and interest, verifying tenant income and qualifying households for occupancy of the affordable units. Are there any questions on that section? Okay. Takes us to inclusionary. So, the inclusionary housing ordinance, again, would remain in Chapter 17.31. So the inclusionary requirement itself, we've modified. We proposed to require a fractional in-lu fee payment. So, for example, if there's a 28-unit project, 15% of 28 would be 4.2. So, the developer would pay 0.2 or 20% of whatever an in-lu fee would be for one unit. So we're not really leaving any, any money on the table. And any fractions that are 0.5 or more, obviously, would round up to provide a whole unit. So we're trying to capture those fractions that are less than, than a half a unit. This section also has some minor revisions to clarify when inclusionary units can be considered target units under the density bonus ordinance. Are there any questions on changes to that section? Okay. Moving on, the inclusionary housing incentives section. So, I want to apologize, there is a typo in the written staff report at the top of this section. So this section was revised to allow for-sale developments to propose accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, to meet the inclusionary housing requirements. That's currently allowed in the 2009 ordinance, had been taken out in the 2019, and we studied it again in the fall, and you all decided that we should reintroduce it. The revised language acknowledges that such ADUs could be rented or sold should the city choose to amend its ADU ordinance to allow affordable ADUs to be sold. The Commission did voice some interest in studying an ordinance to allow affordable ADUs to be sold. We anticipate bringing back, like, a comprehensive ADU ordinance update later this year. That would include those provisions for your study. Finally, this section also has an adjustment to the incentive that allows inclusionary units to be smaller than market rate units. This is also something we discussed in the workshops. So the revised language would require that if inclusionary units are going to be smaller, that the overall square footage of the inclusionary units would have to be comparable to the market rate. This may result in and yield additional affordable units. Are there any questions on the changes to incentives? Okay. The next section is alternatives. So these are alternatives to constructing units on site. This section had some pretty extensive revisions. For, you know, first is that we extended all alternatives that were provided for rental in the 2019 ordinance to for sale. That was something we discussed in the fall, that the Commission was open to putting into the revised ordinance. Other alternatives, so for-sale developments, we've... For the in-lu payment option, we're proposing that for-sale developments of 15 or fewer units or lots can decide they want to pay an in-lu fee rather than construct on-site. They wouldn't have to get approval for that, they could, they could decide, they could opt-in. For 16 or more units or lots, we're proposing that they can make that request, but it would be subject to council approval. So, they have the option to request it, but it would be up to the council for discretionary review. This, when we were looking at what, you know, how to formulate that, we looked at other neighboring jurisdictions, and for the jurisdictions that do impose an in-lu fee, it was pretty typical to see, like, from 10 units or lots to 20 units or lots, either have the option to pay an in-lu fee or mandated in-lu fee. Like, some cities said, if you're less than 20 units, we don't even want you to build. You have to pay a fee. So, just for some context. We think it's in line with what our neighbors are requiring. For the off-site construction alternative, we added some more language that encompasses the idea of clustering that you guys studied in the fall. So it's kind of just embedding that concept of, of, you know, putting all required units into one building. The off-site preservation option, this is a new alternative that we're proposing. It would allow conversion of existing housing units somewhere else in the city that are being rented at market rents or, you know, that aren't restricted, to be converted to deed-restricted affordable units, subject to certain conditions and council approval. For the land dedication alternative, we added some more qualifying criteria. So the land that's going to be donated would have to meet certain requirements that weren't specified in the earlier ordinance. The special needs project funding alternative was amended to clarify when we need to collect the funds. And then we're proposing deleting the other alternative section. It was fairly vague the way it was worded. We feel we've really expanded the alternatives. We're not sure what other alternatives a developer might propose, so we're just suggesting deleting it and relying on the menu of alternatives laid out. Are there any questions on this section? Okay. Moving on, so, the Affordable Housing Plan section. So similar to the density bonus ordinance, we amended this to make it comply a bit more with fair housing laws and extract those income verification and other qualification procedures that we would capture again in citywide implementing guidelines. That's all the changes in that section. Any questions? Okay. Next, the Affordable Housing Agreement section. So, this section was amended to clarify the affordability term for rental units, which is in perpetuity. There were some, the language was unclear in the 2019 ordinance, but the intent was for those units to be affordable in perpetuity. So we made that language more clear. Any questions on that? Okay. Implementation and enforcement section, so similar again to the density bonus ordinance, we amended this to make reference to implementing guidelines and what those guidelines would address. And that concludes the summary of major changes to the 2019 draft ordinance. Any other questions or thoughts coming to mind? Okay.
I... I'm still wondering about the in-perpetuity, and it probably just needs to be explained. I'm interested in the lawyer's perspectives in particular. It would just seem, I think I understand why you did it. There was kind of an issue with maybe having a mixture of terms on the covenants, and you just wanted to make sure that that was all aligned. And in-perpetuity sounds nice, but it seems like things change. And I can't, I don't, I mean, maybe I'm not imaginative enough to come up with circumstances where you would want to change it. It seems to make sense to me, once it's affordable, keep it affordable forever. But another part of me thinks that it might be logical to reevaluate at a certain time. Let's say at the time of the next housing element. Like, what, what if the economic conditions change? It just makes sense to me that there should be conditions where it could be reconsidered. But maybe this is what everyone does, and I just wonder if it makes sense to all the other Commissioners. Maybe it's a minor point.
Well, just, you know, my, my thoughts on it, I guess it's because when the developer does a project, he, he does it based upon certain criteria. So, those criteria should exist, you know, in perpetuity until, you know, the, there, the project is no more. So, I guess that makes sense to me, because when you're building something, you're building something with certain expectation standards. That should always exist.
Okay.
I think that works.
Maybe it's where you're sitting, Doug.
Yeah, I think I agree with Commissioner Sayasan. It seems to me that this applies probably mostly more to the for-rent units than, than the sale units, because if a developer is going to be an owner, is going to be taking on certain criteria or requirements for affordability, that needs to be static and unchangeable so that they can pencil out and project what, what the profitability is and what the incentives are to build them in the first place, without having to worry about whether those will change or morph over the years to be more restrictive and therefore less profitable. It seems to, I think it seems to be a recognition of the need for predictability about those, those numbers and those outcomes. That's my take.
Yeah, and actually, we have Tim Davis with us from Hart, and he can give a little more context, too, as to like what's standard in the industry. Tim?
Yes. For most, for many cities, they do look at 55 years for rentals and 45 years for ownership opportunities. However, 100% affordable properties are almost always done in perpetuity. And this simply aligns with that, and it does provide predictability. And we have found that developers are not really looking at the 99 or perpetuity window. They're looking at the 10- to 15-year window when they build a project. And so it actually doesn't change the kind of underwriting guidelines for them, whether it's 55 years or 99 years, or perpetuity. So, from that perspective, it doesn't change what the developer's looking like, looking at and making their decision whether to build or not to build.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
And also, I should say also, obviously, this is a legal agreement between the city and the developer, and it doesn't mean that you can never, if there is some catastrophic situation where the city and the developer needs to come back to the table and change that agreement, they would simply write up a new agreement.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions on that? Okay. All right, so... In terms of implementation, so following public hearings at the Commission, the Council will consider... the council will consider the draft ordinance you recommend. They'll also consider adopting in-Lufis. So we provided some proposed preliminary in-Lufis. It was attached to your staff report, just for your reference. That's based on a 2015 NEXUS study that the city did, and we just applied CPI increase in that interim period to derive those fees. And then we also wanted to just highlight briefly that the way the city reviews certain housing projects has changed also since 2019. So in 2022, we adopted provisions for housing development permits. So this is required for projects that would be subject to inclusionary or density bonus ordinances. So, you know, it imposes that projects must conform to objective standards in the zoning ordinance. Housing development permits are reviewed by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator mails notice of the request and their proposed action to neighboring property owners, and property owners are provided an opportunity to submit comments. If comments are received, the zoning administrator would hold a public meeting and to go over the proposal in detail, to go over the analysis of the project. So if a project was requesting a density bonus, incentives, or concessions, et cetera, those would all be detailed in the zoning administrator's notice and report and analysis. Projects that require subdivision, so tentative or parcel maps, would still be reviewed by the commission, since you are the reviewing body for those maps, or the city council, depending on the type of map. And then, of course, projects that are requesting alternatives to the inclusionary housing requirements that require council approval as set forth in the ordinance would be heard by the city council. So just, again, wanted to go over those changes that, you know, change the way that the commission addresses housing projects. Commissioner Gooding, I know you had asked about how the commission, does that address your?
Can I just ask really quickly, since we're talking about that? Do you have a provision in there where you get to update the housing fees based on CPI?
Oh, the in-Lufi? Yeah, so that's definitely something that we'll put into, whatever council acts on would be a built-in escalator to capture increases, and yeah, so it's not static. Okay, that will wrap up the staff report. So we're recommending that the commission recommend council approval of Resolution 2025 RZ01. Are there any additional questions for staff at this time?
Thank you. We have opened a public hearing? And they can, public can call in for the next two minutes? Or, okay, thank you. Were there, there weren't any written communications regarding this received?
No, staff didn't receive any written communications.
30 seconds? All right, two minutes has passed, there's no one raising their hands. Thank you. Staff, were there any additional comments? Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
There's to be a second.
Second?
Sorry, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes with five ayes. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Not for me, no, it's the output from the meetings we had in the fall, and I think it was implemented.
You have no questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Then may I ask for a motion to approve zoning text amendment 2025 RZ01?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes with five ayes. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council, except where specified otherwise. Appeals shall be filed with the city clerk not later than 15 calendar days following the planning commission's decision. Exceptions to the 15-day filing period include the following. Appeals shall be filed with the city clerk within six calendar days of the planning commission's action for use permits and variances, and 10 calendar days for tentative maps and advertising sign applications. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110. I don't believe there's any old business. There isn't. Any items initiated by the staff?
Yes, you may have heard that the council is going to change their meeting start time to 6:30 PM. Just wanted to advise the commission of that, and if you have any appetite or interest in changing your start time, we could agendize that. But that's totally up to the commission's discretion and choice. So I'm going to turn it over to you to have that discussion.
Commissioners? Thoughts?
There's something I like about an earlier start time. Sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Gooding.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, it kind of, but I could go both ways. I like it, it's right after work, lets you get on with the rest of your evening after that, whereas this tends to fall, you know, especially if they go long, you could, gets close to bedtime.
I think it's worth putting on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss. I think there's enough ground soul maybe about that. I'm retired, it doesn't matter for me, but for the working folks, they have more dog in the hunt about their time constraints, but I think it's worth discussing. It's, that's my vote.
Yes, yeah, agree. I agree.
Do we should have a tell?
I mean, selfishly, 6:30 is bath time, so I would have to miss bath time twice a month, but that's fine for our little guy. But I mean, I can, I can miss it twice a month if that, if it works better for everybody else. That's totally fine, either way works for me.
Yeah, is it better for staff if it's at 6:30?
I have no preference myself.
Staff is amenable to whatever commission decides. Some of us have personal preferences, but not strong enough to, yeah.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be 6:30, it could be 7:00 or whatever time. Right, okay. So if we can agendize that for the next meeting, please. Any items initiated by the commission? No? Selection of the planning commission officers?
So you might just want to solicit any motions to, to, what would you say, to select somebody or a candidate? Anybody, put somebody forward if you wish, it's up to you.
Who is the vice?
Can you remind us of, is, there is some extensive logical rotation that we've employed over the years. Can you remind us of where we stand in that sequel?
Pamela, or Commissioner Sayasan is vice chair. So.
I would make a motion to nominate Commissioner Sayasan as the chair, as the new chair, this year? Is that what I would do? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
That's what I did.
Second?
I and I accept?
Do we have to vote?
We have to vote, okay, well.
Is there a vote?
We would have to accept before we.
Okay, I do.
We're all in favor.
All in favor?
Ayes.
Aye.
And that passes with five ayes.
And then I think I would make a motion to nominate Commissioner Gooding as the vice chair.
A second?
Commissioner Gooding, would you accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes with five ayes. Thank you. Otherwise, I think we are adjourned to our next meeting on March 13th, 2025. Thank you.
I think I advised staff earlier that I'll be out of town that week.